Good evening. Welcome to the October 22nd, 2024. Sorry, yeah, 2024 meeting of the Dover School Committee. My name is Jeff Cassidy and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 on the dot. We're pleased to hold this meeting at the Dover Sherborne Middle School this evening. We're also live streaming with DSC TV. Please note this meeting is being recorded. As usual, our first agenda item is community comments. We have a Zoom open for community comments. I do not see any on there. Any community comments in person? I do not see any. So with no community comments, we can move along to the first agenda item, which is actually an update from our PTO. We have Claire here.
Good evening. I have prepared a little bit of an overview of the year ahead, a little bit about what has already happened. So I'll just take some time to go through. I've also included a page in here with our budget to give you some numbers of how we're operating.
Thank you.
And when you get around, feel free to sit and join us at the table or stand, whatever you prefer.
Thank you.
So I'm thrilled to be here representing the PTO as the president this year. We have had a busy year thus far. I kind of put some bullet points of the year because we stay very busy. September, we had our back-to-school picnic where we welcomed our community back. We had an ice cream truck and a food truck. And it was just a good way to kind of say, oh, summer's over, back to school. We also did a cereal box challenge this year where we collected many cereal boxes and donated them to a place to turn. We do that as part of our community outreach. We do that with Chikering Cares as well. So we're kind of all working together to make sure that we're serving the community. Coming up very soon, this Thursday, we have International Night. Some people here are doing a table for us. We're representing different countries, cultures. We're very excited about that. Coming up in November, sorry, continuing with community outreach, we're going to create Thanksgiving baskets where we put together the whole school. We'll collaborate to just put items together to donate to a place to turn. December will continue with holiday cards for our community members, such as the post office, the town hall, people that sometimes might get forgotten about. We make sure to remember them. January, we put on a spelling bee. It's always a really great turnout. I think this year we have almost 40 kids. So they're already preparing. They've started learning all their words and I can't wait to see how that plays out. February, we have books from the heart where we have students donate a book in honor of their favorite teacher. And then we get to leave it in the library. So kids get so excited, they, you know, show, oh, I donated this to so-and-so a few years ago and it's in our library. So it's a really special thing that we worked together to put on. March will have a family bingo night. May will have bike safety and steam day. So that's a busy month. And then June, we put on the fifth grade celebration. So that's just a snapshot. We also do things like field trips, different community outreach that I mentioned, curriculum enrichment, these are things all throughout the year. On the last page, our budget. That's how we can make it happen. We just came off a successful auction year. This year, we're heading into check writing. So it's kind of an every-other-year thing where we might have a little bit of a deficit from check writing, but then we'll make up for it the following year. So kind of an every-other-year model. You'll see that a lot of our budget, we want to focus on curriculum enrichment. That's important. Teacher support, events that we put on, hospitality. We provide lunches, breakfast, different things for the teachers because we really appreciate everything that they do. So, sorry, I just kind of like crammed a whole year into a quick blur. Any questions you have for me?
First, I'll just start, thank you for all that you guys do so much that the PTO does to supplement what is already a good education at Chikering. But I think without PTO, we're missing out on a lot of these great additional initiatives. And thank you.
And I love that you share it with us too. Like the cereal box challenge, that we all get to see the video of the kids. And, I mean, Mr. Joel's in there, like, that was so fun. I mean, the whole family watched it a few times.
It was really amazing. And we're very excited for the, all the events coming up. It's a lot of work and thank you so much for doing it.
Any questions for Claire?
One question. I know that last year we changed the model for the donations to the teachers. And I think this year it might have even changed a little bit more. Not donations, like the school funds and like what we can off, what we, what room parents can provide teachers as gifts. Is that still in your jurisdiction and oversight? Is that?
Room parents?
Yes, we oversee room parents, but we have removed the financial component. Because it was kind of getting to the point where some parents who volunteered to be a room parent were dealing with a lot of funds that, you know, was in their Venmo. And it just got a little bit challenging for them to manage that. So we, as a PTO, decided that we would back out of it. We still offer support and guidance, but we prefer for the parents to gift the teachers directly themselves as they see fit. And as it gets closer to gifting periods, we'll provide the statute because that's really what we want to stay in line with. We don't want to put our teachers in an uncomfortable position where they have to accept gifts that are higher than the accepted amount.
That makes sense. So now during the holidays and when it's expected, you'll just provide the, like, the policy and oversight and then it will be on the from parents to do it themselves?
Yes.
Okay, that makes a ton of sense.
I know our room parents send a message out saying that this year they're not going to be doing that, so.
I think it ultimately helps everyone out. But it is new and it's been a learning process for all of us. But I think we're, we're kind of getting to the point where parents are on board.
Go ahead. All right.
Thank you for having me. I don't know how you guys do this every month. It's nerve-wracking. But thank you for taking the time to listen. And I'm always available if you ever have a question at president@doverpto.org.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. That was awesome.
Okay. We can move on to our superintendent comments. Beth is out today, so we'll have Denny putting forward the superintendent comments.
Great. So I'm happy to present some updates on behalf of Superintendent McCoy. So some of the things that she was going to cover. We finished up our open houses at all the schools and at Chikering. So it was a very successful event. Started out with a presentation on the new math curriculum by our math coach extraordinaire, Laura Halloran. And then Dr. Reinemann and Mr. Carnes gave a great presentation. And then teachers were able to see the specialists, go to classrooms. So it was well-tended and there were many smiling faces after that event. We recently had our Dover Sherborne Arts Homecoming. So it's a great event held every other year where Dover Sherborne alum come back. And these are alum that are either spent their whole career doing fine and performing arts or have pursued other careers and still pursue the fine and performing arts. So they go around all the schools, meet with students, talk to students at the region about their career paths and do a panel at the end of the day. So it's always fantastic to have those alum come back and to be able to speak about the ways that arts are impacting them and the way that they're still able to include that in their lives. So you can see a photo here of some of the alum that came back to present at the panel. So really great for our students to be able to see that, you know, if they're involved in drama right now or music, that there are all these different venues and different ways for them to pursue it once they get out of Dover Sherborne. So it was the Arts Homecoming. A few weeks ago, we had the Metco Leadership Retreat. So myself, Superintendent McCoy, Monique Marshall-Deal, our Metco Director, we went to this. So this happens yearly where superintendents and district admin go to, was that, Gillette Stadium? And this year, which was extra special, is they had a panel of various districts to talk about kind of best practices related to Metco. And we had Kate Potter and Myla Clark, who are Dover Sherborne parent liaisons, who went and were part of that panel. So it was very cool to see a panel full of superintendents and then to see our own kind of parent liaisons there talking about how we engage with our Boston families and how we try to kind of bridge the two communities together. So you can see a picture of that here. It was really, really neat too, because after they had the panel, they had kind of breakout sessions. And to see the other superintendents and Metco Directors kind of like flocking around Kate and Myla and them kind of talking about the strategies and the things that we've done in Dover Sherborne was just really neat to see the enthusiasm that all these other district administrators had to hear about what was going on in Dover Sherborne. In that retreat, we also talked a little bit about Metco 2.0 and the vision of Metco 2.0, Metco 2.0 districts and the ways that we all can support each other as Metco districts. Legal updates. So every year in the fall, we have our legal team come and present to our district leadership teams, give any updates on legal things. So this year, they presented us any updates relating to Title IX, to bullying laws, harassment laws. So that's always helpful for us to be in the know about changes and any updates to procedures. We, as always, are doing, running our student safety drills. So I believe at Chikering, we already had our first lockdown drill, which went, and our fire drill, which went very, very smoothly. The lockdown drills are always presented to our elementary students in a developmentally appropriate way. And each building has a school safety team that meets multiple times per year. So after lockdown drill, the Chikering School Safety Team meets, they debrief, they talk about what went well, ways to improve. We've also been working with the Dover Chief of Police to make sure that we have all of our policies and protocols in order. MCAS analysis. So by now, everybody should have received their students' MCAS scores in the mail. At our November meeting, we'll be presenting an analysis of those MCAS scores. So I feel like I've been living with these for really a long time and been living and breathing MCAS scores. So we'll look forward to giving you some of the highlights of that in our November School Committee meeting. And then recently, it was this last week, I don't even remember anymore. Last week, we had a Challenge Success sponsored event where we had John O'Sullivan come and talk to parents and community members about how to be supportive of your student athletes. So there was one session offered at Chikering in the morning and then another session offered at the region at night. I know myself, having a six-year-old in soccer right now, I learned a lot from it about how to be a supportive parent and to, you know, remind my son that the most important thing is that I love watching them play and how to not argue with the coach and how to help our students find balance with sports. Because I know a lot of our students are very, very involved in sports. So I thought that was a really, really successful event and a lot of people took away some great nuggets from that. And then last but not least, last Friday, Chikering had an all-school assembly. And myself and Superintendent McCoy were invited by Dr. Reinemann and Mr. Carnes to come to the assembly. So we try to do this at all the schools so that when we're in classrooms observing and walking through, kids aren't like, who are you? Which happens to me often. Somebody, I always get asked if I own the school or if I'm the vice president of the school. Someone, student thought I was another parent's, another student's dad one time. So here are some pictures. We did a very, very intense question and answer session where the students all had questions for us. And then we read a book. I had some challenges with my vision, so a lovely educational assistant came up and gave me her glasses. But it was a really, really nice time to be with the students and hear from them. I made the mistake of telling them that I'm from New York and I'm a Yankees fan. So as students were leaving, they were booing me. That's always fun to have. But it's always great being in the school. Now hopefully, when they see Superintendent McCoy and I in their classrooms and we're asking them questions about what they're learning, it doesn't feel like it's these two random adults that are coming in. So those are the big superintendent's updates. And then kind of my assistant superintendent's updates. So I've been continuing to do classroom visits the past couple of months, specifically in math lessons since we have our new math program. Usually in the fall, I meet with all of our high school department chairs and middle school department heads. This year, I've extended that to our elementary professional learning community leaders. So over the next month or so, I'll be meeting with them. So it's an opportunity for them, if they have concerns from their team or questions about curriculum things, for us to have a conversation and to address any concerns or questions they have. Recently, we finished our data sweeps and our data team meetings. So our students completed all of their beginning-of-the-year diagnostics. So one of them is in Dibbles, which is helping assess where students are in terms of their reading and their phonics. We use a math screener, we use iXL to screen students on math. And then for a full day, all of the grade level teams come together with our interventionists, our counselors, our building leaders, our coaches. And they talk about students based upon what they've seen in the first month of school. And I have to say, this year, I was able to be at Chikering's data team meetings and I'm incredibly impressed by our staff and the way they're able to talk about the kids. And just the very granular level where they could identify a student, look at the specific diagnostic, say, we did kind of the hiding five math performance task and the student responded this way, which means that we should put this student in this type of math intervention. Like, when we think about our educators as professionals, I feel like they really shine in these data team meetings, just in the way they're able to talk about students, make data-based decisions, and then be able to put together plans for our students. So based on those data team meetings, some students have been put into tier two and tier three interventions, getting support during wind blocks and whatnot. So if students are being part of those interventions, families are notified as well for that. But I have to give a huge props to our teachers, our coaches, our interventionists, everybody who's working to make those, to make those decisions about our students. Then finally, we've begun planning for our December 2nd Professional Development Day. So like everything this year, the theme of that day is math. So right now, we are bringing in a speaker, John San Giovanni, who's going to talk to both of our elementary schools, or both Chikering and Pine Hill, about what productive, what the role of productive struggle is in the math classroom and how it's something that we actually want to promote in our students, productive struggle. And then teachers are going to have a lot of time throughout the rest of the day to just be with each other in cross-school teams and to just plan and talk about the math. So I think that's going to be really, really powerful to have both schools together and have the third-grade team from Chikering saying, this is what's worked really well. And then the Pine Hill team can say, this is what's worked well for us. So we're looking forward to that Professional Development Day. And then right now, I'm working on putting together what our offerings are going to be for teachers, like our art teachers, our PE teachers, our librarians, kind of more and more specialty teachers. The final update is that this time of year is always about our educator evaluations and our educators picking what their goals are going to be throughout the year. So our educators pick two goals. One is a student learning goal and one is a professional practice goal. The student learning goal is all about something that is going to make a difference or an impact on our student learning. So here are some examples that I pulled of some student learning goals. So again, not surprisingly, a lot of them are about math this year. So one is about the use of Math Fact Lab and the use of visuals and routines for students to use efficient strategies when it comes to multiplication fact fluency. A lot of our teachers have been doing things around math talks and how they can get students to talk about math with each other, ask questions of each other. And then a lot of our special educators, their student learning goals have been around the new IEP that we're putting into place this year. And that's all about how we can give more voice to our students, even our elementary learners, to be able to talk about what they need, how their progress is, and how they can have an active role in these IEPs. Professional practice goals are things that educators want to, something they want to do to deepen themselves as professionals and to develop their own capacity and efficacy. So again, a lot of them about implementing the new math curriculum as well as the new IEP. So our building leaders are very, very busy right now, meeting with every single educator to talk over their goals, to reflect on last year, on the start of the school year. And then at the end of the year, all the educators meet with their evaluators again to talk about their progress on their two goals. And they have to submit evidence to show the progress they've made in their two goals. So it's always a nice time of year where people are being reflective, but also thinking about the kind of targets they want to set for themselves and for their students. So that is the update from myself and Superintendent McCoy. Happy to take any questions people have.
I have a comment, not a question.
Sure.
The Chikering Open House was so fantastic. Laura Halloran, is that her name? My goodness, she knocked it out of the park. She was so engaging, she was so, I mean, I could have done another half hour with her. She was wonderful. She was really great on like breaking down what, sort of what the whole new program is and the approach. I mean, every adult in there like wanted to stay more, I think. It was great.
Hard act to follow.
Yeah. She did a good job. Like, who knew?
Question, I know you're tired of talking about this, but I feel like we haven't gotten kind of a briefing on the MCAS scores. Can you give your kind of high-level summary of how you feel about this? How the superintendent feels about the findings or the scores and kind of what the kind of action orientation is going forward?
I mean, we're going to be much more detailed at our November meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I can say that just generally, the trends in the state of Massachusetts, most people stayed pretty kind of steady in math. And then there was a slight dip in ELA. Per usual, our scores are always much higher than the state, so that trend has continued. Our fifth-grade science scores were fantastic this year. And then just at a glance, one of the areas that we're looking at improving on is just paying a little bit more attention to giving students more opportunities for writing in the classroom. But we'll have much more details on the analysis in November.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question. For the Challenge Success event, is there a link to the event or it was not recorded?
I feel like we didn't record it.
I think they recorded the second one and they're going to share it out when it's ready. Right now, yes. And originally, they weren't planning to, I think they were able to.
It's phenomenal.
It was amazing, yeah.
It was really great. I wish that there was a, like, a way that we could bring, like, extend him to all of our, all of our kind of leaders of town sports. And he was just really, really great. And so many people had great takeaways.
It's got a great blog, I mean, podcast.
Podcast, maybe that's it. But I know every coach that weekend coached differently because of him that had attended, so.
Awesome. Good. Thank you, Danny. Doing double duty tonight.
Yep.
Appreciate it. We don't have an official agenda item for you, Dr. Reinemann. Were you, did you have anything to?
I was not expecting to present.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. So next up, we have our financial reports, which Don can?
Sure, yes. So your, the first report is just your monthly warrant report. And Jesse, thank you for continuing to make the trek over to Town Hall when you're summoned to sign the warrants. It's, we met not too long ago, so your list is sort of short. Again, if any members want to see what a warrant is and what the details, we have copies in our central office, but you're always welcome to. We can, I can set an appointment up for you to go look at what Jesse looks like. Or she can have a partner come and she can walk through sort of what she does. It's sort of good just to see the details sometimes. And then where you see the fund is where we are charging those expenses to. And that's what I'm returning to, just sort of tell you, like, you know, we talked about Circuit Breaker, you can see we have Circuit Breaker Fund. Our grants, which will, you'll approve tonight, the fiscal year '25 grants, and whether it's coming from the general fund, which is the main numbers that we report here, is the general fund. So that gives you some insight into how they're listed here. So tonight, we are looking at the first sort of snapshot of fiscal year '25. Let's live in the moment because next month, we're going to be talking about fiscal year '26. I really, and we just finished '24. So we, we never live in the current year very long. But, so we have your numbers. I did it as of October 11th, which was right before, I actually took a week vacation. And so that's why it's an odd number. But a payroll had been posted and some warrants had been posted. So I try to give you the most accurate actuals that I can. So just to highlight a few things that have changed since we approved the budget. So whenever we had, and I'll preface it by saying, whenever we have sort of an unexpected departure of a staff member or retirement that we didn't know about when a budget came out, we always step back and say, okay, we have an opportunity here to maybe make a change because we have someone leaving and that we can do something with. So that happened in two instances that impacted Chikering this year. And the first one was our added district coordinator, which was a shared position with the region as a part-time special educator, retired after the budget. So it gave us an opportunity to say, okay, so we have to fill the .5 added district coordinator. It's hard to do that with a .5 educator. And when we talked around the table, one of our needs was probably more oversight and direction for our pre-K programs. We run three pre-Ks between two at Chikering and one at Pine Hill. And so we took that .5 added district coordinator and added a .5 preschool director. So Chikering owns .3 of that position and .2 is Pine Hill. And then the added district coordinator covers all of the added district students, three through age 22, for Dover and Sherborne. So that made sense for us. So it is a little bit more in the budget or in our actuals. For you, we will be looking at that position as we continue through the budget process to make sure it's something that works. But it gave us an opportunity to try that out because we had an opening. The other place that we had an opening and there had discussions is that our SEL coordinator, our SEL coach, that we shared between the two elementaries, also after the budget, decided not to return. And with that, the educator, or the administration sat around and said, really what makes more sense maybe is to have a dedicated adjustment counselor in each building. Because you remember, we had a .5 that was shared. And so we took the 1.0 SEL coach and put a .5 in each school and made that adjustment counselor a 1.0. So FTE-wise, we were the same, but it leaves a dedicated person in each building that's not being shared. And it was feeling that SEL coach and an adjustment counselor can do similar work. So it did make sense to do that. So depending, based on the person that stayed at the 1.0 in Chikering, that's where you do see an over-budget in the guidance, but it's partially offset by the savings in the classroom educator line item. So those were two things we wanted to highlight. There were a few other little tweaks, because as you know, in March, we decided to move the connections program over from Pine Hill to Chikering. We knew there were going to be some specialist positions that need to be tweaked. One for sure was the occupational therapist that we increased .2. We picked up a little bit more of speech, a SLP, but that actually sits down in your contracted service because we're just paying an outside contractor to do that work because that can fluctuate. And I think that was really, we have some leave of absences that are having some one-time savings. So it's savings this year. It won't be something that will go into the budget for next year. And then we have some other leave of absences that will be happening throughout the year and you will probably see your substitute line item go up once those start kicking in. So if you look at salaries, because we always look at our budget in two buckets. I like to look at it in salaries and then operating expenditures. Salaries, we are operating right at budget right now. We probably go a little bit negative when we're done because what we haven't fully expended yet are our substitutes and any custodial overtime. But you can sort of see the ins and outs and hopefully my narrative in your report sort of puts some perspective in some of those numbers. On the expenditures, really, it's too early to know a lot. We've highlighted two for you or three for you. One is, I just talked about the speech, actual, the additional speech. That's where you see the negative number in sped services. And if you look at classroom instructional technology, we have extended, I would say expanded, the use of some critical curriculum data analysis that used to be only for some of the grades and we've expanded that. You'll see that incorporated into the fiscal year '26 budget because we know we want to do it. We didn't know we wanted to do it before, but it was something that was worth. And we knew we can find other savings in the budget to accommodate that. And then the other one where we do know we're going to have savings is in utilities for your heating oil. Our heating oil bid came in at $2.55. I always want them to come to my house. And our budget was based on $3. So there is some savings there as well. And that will continue. That will, that will actually be a savings that we'll see. The other numbers will continue to fluctuate as we, we're only in month two of school, but I'm not forecasting. But I'm not foreseeing that we will see any negative variances from that.
Sorry, air conditioning budget, 80 degrees today.
Yeah, right, yeah. Don't need the heating oil. The third bucket is your added district, um, so that's our in district. Um, so we look at in district, so that's the operations at Chicaring. And then the way that this, um, the regional agreement works is that any Dover resident who goes out of district for, um, their education because of their, their needs, ages three to 22, sits in that part of the budget. So we don't, I, we don't really look at it as Chicaring budget. It's really the town's added district budget that's managed at the Dover School Committee level. Um, and we are, as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, did have some changes post-budget that are having negatively impacting, um, your number. So we had budgeted for, um, 18 out of placements, we have 19. Um, and really the, um, and it be, I'm saying it's a new placement, it's really a, um, unbudgeted because it's not really a new placement. We thought it might, um, that placement might age out and they did not, uh, or graduate and did not. So that is the biggest piece of that, but we also had some changes in placements. And how that happens is that we may have a student who goes to a day program and needs to, um, for various reasons, become a residential placement. We had some of those and that can be, um, that usually doubles, um, your amount. So that's 400,000 just from changes in placement. So those placements we knew about, but where they ended up going was a higher cost than we thought in March. Um, but we also had some changes from students who either left the district or graduated early. And that offset it by 225,000. So they're big numbers going every, every direction. Um, it was, so we just tried to explain that to you, just so you can saw the volatility of what sort of this arena looks like. Um, with that, whenever you have students who change placements and go to res- uh, residential, you have a savings on transportation. Um, and therefore you'll see about $150,000 savings in transportation right now. Now that could change, um, but that helps offset the total number. At the end of the day though, even though we have a large negative variance, remember the way the town of Dover budgets for added district, they do not take consideration at all that you're going to get circuit breaker reimbursement, where most places do net the budget a little bit. So we always have the circuit breaker number to fall back on to help supplement that overage. And we don't have your number quite yet, it'll be probably around a million, maybe a little more. Um, so we're not at that point yet. So we have that million dollar cushion that'll help cover where we are right now at about a half a million dollars over budget. So it's a lot of numbers and that is exciting with some other presentations. And again, we'll give you, um, monthly updates on your financial. And then this, I think, helps though, sort of set the stage for fiscal year 26, cause we already know some things we need to take in consideration. But you can see that we, um, things happen that you, you, you can never have a perfect budget, uh, cause life, life happens after March. Um, but we will, you know, have a good basis to work with and, um, I think that, uh, um, you know, we'll be, we'll be in good shape to start the 26 budget planning process.
If you just go back, um, on the circuit breaker, I know that you've explained it, um, in last year. Um, can you just refresh my recollection? That's actually funds coming from the state and it looks like we're, the tuition costs that we incur are gonna be funded at 75%.
So the formula, right, so that's, that is the, um, that's the mandated rate, 75. And there, you know, it's, you don't always get 75. They have been pretty consistent with 75 lately, because they.
You mean a state fund, 75% of those costs incurred or no?
No, no, so there's a formula to, so it's, um, you take four times your foundation. And I'll bring a, I'll put a formula in the budget, but it's for, you take four times your foundation per pupil cost and that is our responsibility. Anything that goes over that amount, um, then is, um, reimbursed at the 75% rate. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think the, um, I think it's about, it's right under 50,000 is the foundation amount.
Okay, thank you.
So if you have a $75,000 case, we pay the 50, we get 75% back on the 25. So where you really do get a, why we get a million dollars is really our residential placements that are probably three, 400,000. Yeah.
That makes sense, thanks for that clarity.
Yeah, and it is confusing, um, but I'll, I'll include a little sort of calculation example in the budget, um, budget book, so it sort of makes sense.
But it makes sense that we need to pay the foundation amount regardless?
Yes, well, four times.
Right, yeah, yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Exactly.
Wonderful, thank you.
Uh, transportation though, I would say is fairly new and that is very helpful, because, you know, Dover traditionally has had 300, 400,000 in transportation and that, that was fully our responsibility. Um, so the fact that we're getting any reimbursement is great. Now, their plan is if it was fully funded, we would get 75%. Um, and what they do is they fully fund the tuition cost. So I think we're always gonna be guaranteed to get 75% of the tuition cost. And then what's left in their equation is what goes against transportation. So last year, we got a 57% reimbursement on transportation. Um, the final calculation or reimbursement that came out, um, this year is only at 44.
And, and the they you're talking about is which?
Desi.
Desi, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the, um, in the state budget, there's an amount that they budget. Uh, you get reimbursed on, so the reimbursement we're getting this year is based on our expenses from last year. So when they're building the budget, they don't know everyone's expenses yet. So that is sort of the little bit of the unknown and why one piece of it can fluctuate. Back in the day, it used to be the, the mandated rate of 75%. You didn't know what it really was gonna be until probably the second week in July, when they finally dispersed all the funds. But now we know we're gonna get 75% of tuition and what fluctuates is the transportation cost. But it's, I just feel.
Thank you for that, I'm.
Yeah.
I know it's not a simple equation.
It's taken me about 12 years to figure it out.
Maybe catch up at some point.
So, yeah, so that is a big piece of your budget. But I think that where it, um, takes a little bit of the pressure off is that the town, just the way they, uh, budget is that you have that safety net. Do- Sherburne doesn't budget that way and so we do find ourselves where we have to go back and ask the town for more money, um, because we don't have that safety net. So it does make our life a little easier, um, at least from a, a, a annual operational standpoint of what we have to do if we do go over. And if you remember, last year, we were pretty close to using 100% of circuit breaker, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Don. So, the next item we have is, uh, is FY 26 capital plan.
Do you want to jump up to, so this is an opportunity, as I said, uh, your fiscal year 26 budget, operating budget, will be presented next month. Um, so if there's anything that's in your purview from a school committee that you'd like to pass along to us as we build the budget, we usually use the meeting in October to do that. Um, so it would really be things like, um, you know, curriculum changes, which we're already heavily into that, class size policy. So things that you guys have under your purview that you are anticipating or wanna see changes to that would impact us building the budget.
Yeah, um, anything from our side, class size, increase, decrease, good on that side. Yeah, no, I think the way you've been operating the, the budget is.
Okay, perfect, yep. Just wanna make sure you guys have some.
No, thanks.
One question, I know that we've expanded to breakfasts, is the kitchen, there's probably a question for you. Is the kitchen, well, student to, to do that, is there anything that the kitchen would need?
I was thinking, Don's actually our.
Yeah, I, I handle food services. So, um, you know, we have the opportunity right now, because of the surplus that we have on all three of our school revolving funds, to upgrade some of our equipment, so we have been doing that. Um, the, we just put a new steamer in that helps at lunch. Um, and I think we're still experimenting with breakfast. It's pretty simpli- simplified right now.
Sure.
Um, but that's to sort of get the kinks out and figure out how it's gonna work. Um, there's opportunities for us to see potentially to expand some of the offerings that we do. But, um, it's a lot for, we had, I think Chicaring has one of the highest participation rates, I will say, um, for school lunch. So we serve more students percentage-wise at Chicaring than we do at any of our other two campuses. So they, we work really hard, uh, but they work really hard, um, in getting that all done. So, but we do have the, the, um, the, uh, wonderful situation where we have money to purchase what we need. Um, and we've been looking at all three kitchens, um, and, and, and doing what we can. The one thing we would really love is to put a water fountain in the cafeteria and there is just no way. Um, the way the plumbing is, we've, we've examined it multiple times, gotten multiple opinions and there's just no feasible way, unfortunately, to put a water fountain.
That sounds frustrating.
In the cafeteria. Um, even if you wanted to spend tons of money, it's just the way the plumbing is, it is, is impossible. So we explore everything, so that's just to give you an example of what we'd really like to see that we just can't make happen. So is that coming from kids saying, uh, may I have a glass of water please and they have to go somewhere? No, we have a water bubbler there, but it would just be nice to have a bottle filler. Oh, yeah. If we could.
People get a cup, fill the cup.
Okay.
And we train them to use the same cup if they go back, that's a big step. But it's a waste of the, you know, cause you know, we give them little.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they could still take their water bottles too, but I think we were, uh, asked them to do their water bottles out in the hallway. So we have added more water bottle fillers in the school itself. Okay. Um, which are located, you know, not that far away. It would just be nice to have one in the cafeteria, um, but that's, same with Pine Hill. We don't have one in Pine Hill either, so it just is something that the way they're constructed and the plumbing, it's not aligned with putting it someplace where the public is. Right. Uh, but thank you for, for asking about that and, um, you know, we're very fortunate that we have such dedicated staff in all three of our kitchens. Um, and I think they do a great job of, uh, I will have to say, the state's giving us a lot of opportunities for like, uh, fresh, local fruits, vegetables. It's amazing, um, meats, Walden meats. I mean, yeah, so they're really looking, the state's looking now that every, they're, um, supporting lunch, universal lunch to sort of support the, the local, smaller, um, distributors.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So Little Leaf Lattes, I mean, it's amazing what, oh, yeah.
It's great.
Oh, yeah. It's really like, it's good.
It's only, I don't know if this technically in, uh, school committee's purview, but for the buses, I know that contract is coming up. Can we have it priced out with, or understand what the bus tracking app would be like?
Um, yes, we can talk about that when we, um, put together the bid, the bid package.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that would be something that we'd have to put in, but we could potentially put it in as an alternate.
Yeah.
So that you could see what it is. So we'll keep that in mind when we, we'll probably, I'll probably put that bid package together, I think in December, once the budgets are done. And it goes out, um, in January.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on into another piece of fiscal year 26. Dover starts their capital process really early, in fact, I think it was due, uh, last Friday. But I always tell them, um, that we will present it to the school committee at your October meeting and then submit it to them. So you will see, um, on your little plan, hopefully you can sort of read it. You'll get the bigger one in your budget book, so, um, don't strain your eyes, tonight I'll, I'll give you the highlights. Um, but the only ask that we have for fiscal year 26 is that there were some, um, uh, now I'm gonna say oddball, but some rooms here and there that didn't go into our doing the whole classroom wings when we were doing all the floor replacement. So we had our flooring, um, company come out and give us a quote for all the other spaces. So the art rooms upstairs, the whole admin wing, the teacher's work room, um, some smaller guidance counselors offices. So the 75,000 that we're bringing forward is to complete all those additional areas. Um, and therefore we will have replaced all the original tiling, um, in the school. And we'll get a rid of, get rid of any additional or any remaining stripping and waxing, um, cause the new floors don't require that kind of maintenance. So 75,000 would cover all of that and, um, some of it is carpet tiles and some of it is, um, the ultra quartz that we'll use, so it's a mixture. But that's the last little bit we needed to just sort of wrap up the whole school. Um, we looked at our other out years and as you know, we keep the roof covering there every year. We keep pushing out, keep pushing out because there's no reason to address that right now and it would be a costly capital, um, request and that $900,000 is a placeholder, it could be more than that. But we have had a, uh, we had a roofing, um, uh, consultant come out and do every building in the district. And so we know that, uh, we don't have any identified issues there. So we, annually, we take a look at it, but we'll probably just keep pushing that out. As you know, we could, you could have a 30-year roof and so we're just now hitting the 20-ish, in the early twenties. So we keep it there in the, in the next year, just as a, a good placeholder, um, just in case. Uh, but just know that's sort of the philosophy on that. Um, the other thing that's gonna start, uh, cropping up, because we are getting to be over the 20-year mark, is our, some of our HVAC equipment. We have, um, decided to, uh, probably engage an engineering firm this year to look at all of our HVAC equipment. And with that, if you recall, we are also going to look at the opportunity to, um, air condition the cafeteria. So when we started replacing that equipment, it gives us an opportunity to see if there's one that we can, you know, um, make a larger unit to incorporate that space. So with the engineering firm coming in and reviewing it and giving us a sort of a, um, a, a timeline of what we need to do and when, that'll give us a more, um, accurate sort of capital plan. Um, we found that our onsite inside report that we use has been a little faulty in the HVAC world. We've experienced that here at the region. So that's why we want to bring, one of our engineering, we, we've worked with a couple, um, over the last, uh, five years. We're gonna bring one of them in to give a, do a sort of an engineering study. We could incorporate that, save, in that cost between your, um, reserve fund and the operating budget and we can also pull some from the building fund. So we'll be able to fund that and get it done this year. So I'll bring you more information when we get that up and running, but that will give us a better roadmap for our HVAC equipment.
On that note, um, would, would we ever ask the engineering company to also do an assessment for energy efficiency? Um, if you're looking at maybe aging roof, solar panels and those kinds of things tend to go nicely together. Is that something that they'll be able to opine on as well?
Yeah, we've had some, um, some analyses already on sort of solar panels there. Um, the trees that are in that area are, don't make us a great candidate. Um, but as far as the energy savings, um, like here at the region, we had a, our rooftop units were sort of, uh, multifaceted and that was both, um, electric and gas. We were replacing with full electric, um, getting rid of the gas piece. Um, we do have oil at Chicaring, so when that comes about, I know the town's gonna want us to look at a way to get away from that.
Okay.
Um, so we will definitely, um, we do think, we do have that forward thinking and we also then, uh, can access sort of the green community grants.
Right.
For things that we can do that way, right?
Absolutely.
So the timing should be good, cause Dover is sort of maxed out their green community right now with the, um, community center. Um, so when we're, when it's our need to sort of do some of this, hopefully those funds will be available that we can draw upon.
Yeah, makes sense if you're doing a five-year plan, that you'd wanna.
Yeah.
Thinking about those things now, right?
Right, exactly. Um, and then so taking our onsite inside report, which for new members, we have a 20-year capital plan that gives us like a roadmap of things that we should be looking at and that's what helps us populate these outer years. A couple of things that are coming up are the carpet tiles in the library, which have already been replaced once, um, since Chicaring opened. Um, our boilers, although we're finding that onsite insight had our boilers having a shorter useful life than, um, what is, what ours can do, um, which is what we also saw at the region. And then we have some rooftop handler, um, units that are just really air exchange. And that's what like mainly the classrooms had before we added the AC. Um, and so that's another piece that we're gonna incorporate into the engineering side. So a big chunk of this now will be probably better analyzed and put into the right years after we get that study done. So tonight though, I will be asking you to approve this five-year plan as presented with the main item being the Chicaring floors.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on that, or move to evoke? Okay, uh, can I have a vote to approve the five-year plan as presented?
Are the casters a vote?
Five seconds.
No second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, I will send this to the capital budget, uh, committee tonight. And just, uh, a quick update, they had actually asked us to start giving them reports about our open projects. Um, so that's the second report that, or may I keep more heads ordered in the first. Um, is that, you know, we did complete, there's a little bit of a. Is that, you know, we did complete, there's a little bit of a small area left of the stairwells that we will do probably in conjunction with the next floor that we have so many left over from fiscal year 25. And then there's some remaining funds on the fiscal year 23 where we did a fire control panel replacement. That was for devices to be replaced. We'll probably hold on to that money for one more year and then the town doesn't like for us to hold on to it forever. But if no devices are showing to be faulty after we did the upgrade, we will return. But we do have, we put a, built a reserve in there for device replacements if we needed it. So after the end completion of this year, we will probably tell the town that that capital project can be closed and return whatever funds are left.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. So moving on, we have a couple of consent items. We have in the back of the packet approval of minutes from the September meeting as well as the fiscal year 25 grants. Anybody have questions on these?
My first one is error on the school committee. Last line, Jesse Holt made a motion to approve the, says changes to the policy manual. I think it should say school group plan.
Yes.
Or to approve the school group plan.
Okay. Okay. With that, with that edit, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent items?
Martha Castle, second.
Second.
Kate Cook, second.
Thank you, Kate. All in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you all. A few other informational items that are in the back of the packet. We do have the October enrollment for the school. We have the regional school committee minutes as well as the Sherburne School Committee, Committee Minutes for you guys to take a look at. And one actual thing I should have said at the beginning, we do have a new member who is sitting with us, who is coming from, who is now a Boston representative on the, on the committee here, Shaniqua Piara, how do you pronounce the last name?
Pereira.
Pereira, okay. So I wanted to welcome you to the meeting.
We're all coming. Yeah, we met you last year too, right?
Yeah.
And last item is any items that people want to make sure we have for the next meeting. So we, all are already heard MCAS is going to be one of the items. Other things that anybody wants to put on there?
And budget.
And budget. Anything else? You always can send me a message in the meantime. All right, so with no other items, we have, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Go sit there.
Second.
Martha Castle, second.
Thank you, Martha. All approved. All right, I call this meeting to an end at 7:23.